Welcome, everyone. Today is Monday, April 21st, 2025, and this is a regular meeting of the City of Asbury Park Planning Board. Chairwoman Kurzak, can you please call this meeting to order?
Yes, this meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975. Adequate notice of the meeting has been provided to The Coaster and Asbury Park Press by publication of the annual meeting notice and posted on the municipal building board and municipal website. All notices are on file with the Board Secretary. Official action can be taken on the following matters before the Board. This meeting is being recorded by AP-TV for your viewing pleasure in the future. Can you please join me with a salute to the flag?
I will now take roll call. James Bonanno?
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Jeremy Hoffman is absent this evening. Mayor Moore?
Here.
Jen Souter?
Here.
Daniel Shenameo is absent this evening. Bob Zuckerman is absent this evening. Kathy McCallum?
Here.
Vice Chair Gunnan?
Here.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kurzak?
Here.
All right, the first item on the agenda is a resolution for approval of for 7-Eleven Bangs Avenue, but I believe that our attorney has some statement?
Yeah, that's going to be carried to the next meeting. I spoke to Andy Caris, and we'll get back to you on the parking requirement. That was the only thing that was hold up.
Okay, so we don't, we can, we can just move it to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Simple enough.
All right. We don't have to do a whole?
No.
Okay. The next item that we have up is, we have the Armory, 637 and 701 Lake Avenue.
I looked at the submissions. The notices are in order. We have jurisdiction.
All right, terrific. Okay.
Hello.
Hello. Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Michael Vidiello. I represent the applicant. I'm here tonight, licensed attorney in good standing in the state of New Jersey. We are here tonight on this matter for an application that was previously approved by the Board. I'm sure you're all familiar, well-familiar with the application and the renovations. And the applicant has, during construction, come across some issues that required modifications to the plan. And what the applicant has done is dealt with your administrative staff, spoken to Michelle and other staffers about whether it could be done administratively or not. That took a little while. There was some back and forth, looking at the plans to try to understand that. And then it was determined, no, it can't be done administratively. You have to return to the Board. So here we are, returning to the Board to describe for the Board the changes that we feel need to be included in the application or in the building. And we have our professionals here to explain what those are and why they think that those are appropriate for the building. So if it pleases the Board, what I would do is I would start with the representative from the applicant, and then we have our architect here also to talk a little more detail about that.
Okay.
Sir, please raise your right hand. So I'm going to swear a firm testimony about giving this merit with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Paul Andrew Millstein. M.I.L.L.S.T.E.I.N.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you. So, good evening, everyone, and nice to see you again. I apologize for seeing you again, although it's always pleasant to come before you. We don't like to take time to do this unless we need to. I will just say that the VFW project is a challenging small building, a small relative. It's not new, out of the ground, cookie cutter. And it's hard for us to perceive everything on documents and drawings. And then when you get actually into the field, scale and sizes and things are just different when you actually walk them and appreciate them live in person. As we've gotten into the details of the project, which we are now, we're in the framing stage, it became apparent that we felt we had some mistakes in our plans or initial drawings. And what I think is one of the assets of this company is that the owner is always willing to stop, change, do whatever he needs to do to get the project right. At the end of the day, we want to make sure we have a product that we're all very proud of. So, again, if you look at our portfolio, our history, you'll see that this is really what we specialize in. And sometimes you do have to make some changes that you feel is necessary. We're not here to value engineer. We're not here to save money. Always good to do, but that's not the intent here, nor are any of these changes going to save any dime. The investment in this project will be substantial, and I think it'll be quite a unique and great project when we're done. That being said, I'd like to give it to the architect, Dan from Motor Architects. Let him go through it, and then we can talk about it as we always do.
Yes.
Thanks.
Is that acceptable?
Sure.
Hold on. Any questions?
Any questions from the planning board members? Our professionals? The public? Any questions from the public based on the testimony? Okay.
Paul, can you just put on the record your position with the company?
I'm Vice President Doug's Development. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
So, Dan, you've heard how we've started off so far, so I'd like you to start by being sworn in.
Yep.
Dan, how are you?
Good.
Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear a firm testimony about giving this merit with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your name for the record and spell it.
Daniel Condatore. C.O.N.D.A.T.O.R.E.
And I could have Dan put his qualifications back on the record.
I can zip through this. You're a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey.
Correct.
Have been for some time.
Yes.
Are you still in good standing?
Yes.
You've appeared before this Board numerous times.
Yes.
With testimony on potential matters.
Sure.
Good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, Dan, before you start to describe the changes that we're here to request, I'll just remind you and remind the Board. So this site received an initial approval, and then the applicant returned before to the Board for some changes regarding the roof line and roof trussing. Now, we've received that approval, working on the building now. And now we're here again, Dan, to discuss these minor changes. So if you could please go through the Board the changes we need.
Yeah, just to summarize real quick, the primary changes are some internal unit layouts. So the counts of the units, obviously, the area of the footprint is the same. So we're just reconfiguring some space internally to make the units that we feel have better flow and better use. And then some window changes that are not fronting the, primarily not fronting the two streets, Bond Street and Lake. It's on the alley side. So that's the two areas that?
Just to clarify, on the unit layout, on the unit layout, there's no additional units? You're not taking away any units?
No.
The unit count's staying exactly the same?
Yes.
It's just layout?
Correct.
Okay.
All right. So this is?
Dan, excuse me, before you go any further, I want to swear in my staff.
Yep.
Please raise your right hand. You solemnly swear a firm testimony about giving this merit with the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Please state your names for the record on your information with the Board.
Donna Miller, Board Planner.
Sam Lockey, Board Engineer. Thank you.
Okay. So the primary updates to the floor plans centralized that front bump out where we had that grant. There's that staircase in the front along Lake Avenue. The original plan, you entered into a small vestibule along Lake, and then we had two units side by side that were multi-story units. You know, going to the site and working with the client, the flow of the units and the tightness of trying to make that a multi-story unit really wasn't working. Also, it was difficult to provide any kind of ADA accessibility to those units since they were only able to have access from the Lake Ave, which were the stairs. So those were the two drivers that had us look at that situation. So what we've done is we've taken those units. Instead of having multi-story units, we have a stack of units per floor for the three levels. So that unit, the first floor unit, you do have access. We have the ramp area. Along Bond, you come in, and then you have an accessible entrance, a kitchen, a living, and then we have bedroom areas on the corners with each of them having their own bathroom. This configuration also allowed us to expand these units on either side. So we're able to punch an opening in the wall. Originally, we had a small bedroom that was uptight in here. We're able to expand that unit and grab some square footage and add a more formal bedroom with more light and more windows, which was lacking because these original bedrooms didn't have windows. We only had the one window that was servicing the unit. So that cleaned that up. So overall, like, in this whole zone, we just provide a better flow, and we thought the units have a better use for the residents.
Shall we mark this as a? Yeah, I was going to ask him to confirm. So the revised layout that we're talking about tonight, that was submitted as part of the presentation for tonight. So that's definitely part of the record that was submitted under the letter application for tonight. But if you'd like to mark it also? A1, very good.
When you first started speaking, you were mentioning about the ramps. Have anything around the ramps changed, or was it just the layout that you just mentioned about the bedrooms?
The external?
Is that the only thing that?
Yeah, yeah, the external ramp and entry.
That all stayed the same?
That's all stayed the same, yeah. This is only internal within the exterior walls. So as you work your way to the second floor, now you see, this would have been the second floor of the units below, but now it's its own individual unit, the same as what we have on the first floor. We have the elevator that comes up. There's a small hallway here. You have an entrance to a unit that's accessible, living space. You have the windows in the front bringing a light. And then we have a bedroom flanked on either side. And again, we've expanded these units to grab some square footage that was, you know, reconfigured and brought into here. So that continued for this area as well. And then even on the second floor, I mean, I guess you guys get to see the theme at this point, right? You know, here, this unit here, we reconfigured a little bit with the kitchen, an entry area, shifting the entry closer to the elevator. The elevator and the stairs actually flipped exactly. So the elevator used to be on this side, and the stairs used to be over here. And you can see the area that the stairs take were really impeding on this unit. So by putting the elevator here and the stairs over there, we're able to get a more spacious unit on that side because that corner was getting a little tight for us. So just in general, like I said, and as Paul mentioned, you know, as we're going out there, working on it, looking at the existing spaces and how everything flows, you're just making adaptive changes to make it better. So, I mean, that's the extent of what we're doing on the inside of the building. And then we have, these are the comparison elevations for the back side. So this is at the top elevation.
One second. So these are part of the same plan set? Is it okay? You have an A1? Okay, thank you. Okay, sorry.
So this is the original. This is what we had submitted for the last resolution compliance set in our last presentation. This is the back alley that would be perpendicular to Bond Street. You can see we have a couple of single set of windows, and then we have a large set of double hungs. I mean, when we originally, originally, you know, came the first time, the idea was that, you know, we want to carry the theme of these double windows from the original openings up to the upper floors. Once we started framing it and we're in these spaces, I mean, they're nice-sized units, but these are large openings that really don't have any kind of view. So it was, it was too much of transparency between us and the alley. We didn't think it was necessary. We felt there was sufficient amount of light, and it wouldn't impact the architecture of the building. So for those units, we changed them to more of a single double-hunged window. There is one that remains the same in the middle. And if I go back to the floor plan, I can show you why. That window splits two bedrooms, right? So that's why we left that one the way it is. And then you can see we have the single windows on either side. So that's the elevation on the alley.
And again, Dan, your plan set, so we have the before and after drawings for you to make it very clear so that we could all understand.
And this is similar to, here's the other alley that is perpendicular to Lake. We have a large amount of openings over here. It just was overbearing for what you were looking at. I mean, obviously, on the existing building, we're not going to change the openings because we're maintaining the historical context of the building. But on the new addition, we felt it was just a little bit too much and too intense. So we changed those. We centered them up. They stacked, and they just switched to single double-hunged windows. And then moving around, this is the Bond Street elevation. This is the approved elevation at the top. We had these two little windows at the center. They felt inadequate, you know, speaking with Paul and the team, and we wanted to do something a little more there. So in this case, we actually added more, bigger windows and introduced those same type of single double-hunged windows there as well on that elevation. But we maintained everything else. And then finally, this is the Lake Avenue elevation. And then when you go to the latest one, you can see there's really, there's no changes on that elevation from what we have approved in the resolution compliance. So the top is, again, the top is the resolution compliance. The bottom is what we've recently submitted as the new application. And that is the summary of the changes.
So no changes on one facade, changes on the other three facades that you described?
Right. So that's contrary to what your initial statement was, where you had mentioned that it was only in the alleyways, which is not true. You are making a change on Bond.
On Bond, the two windows on Bond. Sorry, I misspoke on that.
Correct. Now, I have a question about the Bond side. I see on the, if you look at your rendering, it's showing me on the left-hand side on the fourth story that those are two separate windows. As opposed to, if you look up, what was approved is, are two? They're different windows. Is that intentional, or is that a mistake?
That's intentional. Because?
But you didn't mention that that was a change?
Yeah. It there's, it's, it wouldn't be when a window is framed out, they're going to be as tight as possible because we have the wall. It's almost the same situation that we have on the back. It's just graphically, so on the back, it's similar. Where am I here?
There, right there.
Yes, so we're putting the walls in between it. But you wouldn't see siding in between there. That's just a, that's graphically, that would just be trimmed, just the way the window would be trimmed, to appear as a single window. But it is technically two individual windows that are put side by side with the end of the wall in between.
Separated by trim, not by siding?
Yes, that's correct.
But, but just to be clear, because we're going to see you, that I would appreciate that any changes are noted as opposed to us having to look through this and saying, oh, you didn't mention this.
Okay.
So I would appreciate that. It makes it, it makes life a lot easier for all of us. So then I don't have to bring it up.
Are there any others? Before we go further, any other small changes we can talk about that you didn't hit on?
It would be, it would be the same situation on the other side, then. That's all.
With the division between the windows?
And you can see it on the plans, how that happens.
All right, so pardon me, Dan, the, is there going to be a uniform dimension for where it breaks on a wall, where the windows are separated upon a wall? Is it going to be at least eight inches or six inches or?
It would be the width of the wall, which would be six inches, which is not uncommon, I mean, to trim around the windows four inches itself.
And it's actually a standard in our waterfront design guidelines. But not necessarily CBD, but I'm just saying, so perhaps we just want to make sure that where we've got windows that are not completely mulled together, but are budding, sharing a wall.
Right.
We understand that it's a certain standard dimension, and it will be trimmed out as trimmed, not siding.
Right.
Correct.
Right. But, so, I'm sorry, I'm just, I'm just not, I'm not, I'm not getting why the windows, those windows, those two, very specifically on the left-hand side of Bond, why cannot they not be what you said they were going to be? I don't, I still, I don't get it.
So?
They don't, they're, they're not the same as all the rest of the windows that are on that side of the?
The windows we're talking about?
On that side of the building. They're not the same.
Let's just talk, let's just show those windows. Are you going the wrong way?
No.
Yeah, you're going to, hang on.
The ones on Bond.
Okay.
Yes.
These two windows, oh, I don't, sorry.
Is that the proposed or the?
It's this year.
That's the proposed.
Right.
It's not the same as the rest of them. So I don't get it.
Right. That's what was approved.
And this was approved.
Right.
Yeah, so when a window is mulled together, the two frames, they're not touching. There is still a center mullion that has some dimension to it, but it's obviously not enough to intersect the wall. So in that case, we have to pull the window apart and then have the wall divide the two. But it's very slight. It's, you're not really, once it's finished, you won't know the difference. It's very minimal.
So the issue is what's inside?
Yes, what's inside. The units are driving the change.
Okay.
Because we're, we're putting it where there's two bedrooms or two demising walls from either unit to unit or bedroom to bedroom. Room to room. Like here, I have a bedroom and a bedroom.
Right.
Right? So that, we have to put a wall in between. That wall has to carry to the end and have two windows on either side.
So show me that, so show me that specific window that we're talking about.
Yep.
That specific unit that we're talking about on the fourth floor.
On Bond, right?
On Bond.
Yeah, not that one.
No, it's, it knows this one.
The actual layout.
Floor plan.
Oh, on Bond, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The floor plan, so we can see that what you're saying is exactly why there's a?
So here it is here, right?
That's, that's the one that's facing?
That's Bond, yep.
On the right.
And then it'll be the same on the opposite side. So the original plan had just one room, and that was one window in a room.
Right.
There was no wall there. So when we configured everything, the wall, we brought the wall in, and then, so we didn't want to change it. And like, we could have, you know, ideally, we would have like separated it, separated it, right? And had the center, but we wanted to maintain the architecture.
That's right.
So we just let the wall bisect the windows.
Okay.
And then to put the two together for the same style.
Okay.
Is, is the interior layout also part of the driver for?
Part of the what?
Driving the change for the other elevations that have, went from two to one?
Well, I think it's such as, it's a function of the size of the opening in the bedroom. So if you take like this bedroom in the back, originally, we would have had two double, two windows and two windows, right? I mean, the whole back corner alley unit would have had four windows in it, which is, you know?
Makes it hard for furniture?
Well, yeah, and it's just, it's too, too much scale of glazing.
But that one's the worst-case scenario.
Well?
That one in particular is the worst-case scenario.
But I think all the windows facing, facing the alley side do not need to be that large when you're there.
You did alter the layout of the units on the alley side. So where the walls were before are not all where the walls are going to be now. And that shifted some of the alignment of where windows were going to line up.
Yeah, this unit was reconfigured in the back over here. This shifted things around. Oh, yeah, you're right. Sorry about that.
Three oh two and three oh four shifted.
Yeah, these, these?
And then the two corner units shifted.
These are cleaned up. That's why this unit got expanded. And then we have, the kitchen was more of a buttress here in the middle. And then this got reconfigured a little bit.
And on Bond Street, you had a closet in the middle?
Same thing here. You know, the window placement on the corner and in the alley.
Can you testify as to when did you find out that you were going to actually install the single windows without saying anything?
Well, we could ask Paul if he wants to?
He's already, he's already been sworn. He's done. He can come back, but he'll be, have to be questioned once again.
Yeah, no, he might be, unless Dan can answer. I don't, if Dan can answer?
I don't have a definitive timetable when, when the work was?
Because essentially, they were put in.
They were put in.
And then, okay, can we come back and ask?
When they were done compared to when we started the process of trying to?
If it pleases the Board, is that okay? Is that okay? Remember, you're still on the roof.
So, so, yeah, so this was probably two months ago, give or take. I'm not exactly sure of the timing when the framing was happening. And we had come through the last, got approval, and then as we started sheeting in the outsides, it made sense to make the changes. So I wasn't sure if they needed to be administratively with a revised set of prints. I had to come back to the Board. I reached out to them. There's been communication, and obviously, we need to come back to the Board. So I will tell you that if it's not acceptable to the Board, we'll put the windows in. We bought the windows. They're at the building. I mean, the bedrooms can have more windows. The closet can have a window. None of it's earth-shattering. I apologize for getting the cart before the horse. It's not my intention. But we do feel that it's more in scale now. It gives more usable area in the bedrooms. We actually love natural light, and the alley elevations don't bother me. I did a lot of development in the city, so that's fine. We just thought this made more sense. So process-wise, out of line. I'll take that. He has no idea. He's in Florida. He doesn't know what I do on a daily basis, and probably better off he couldn't take it. So that's me. And we can change it if we need to. We want to have a great project and a great relationship, and that's why I'll take full responsibility for that.
Yeah, yeah, going forward, what we're looking for is that are, so that the people that are doing inspections don't find things as opposed to you coming up and saying, hey?
Sure.
Here's what we want to do.
We've all had?
We prefer to go the reverse.
Yeah, I understand.
Okay.
That's me.
Okay.
But in this case, it wasn't an inspector who'd wandered by. The applicant did come in.
That's not true.
So, yeah, all right, I was going to let you just completely say it. January 9th was the day that we went out there and we told you all about it.
Okay.
That all the windows were done, all the framing's done.
Sure.
Now you're coming in. So I believe what the chairman was getting at is that you got caught, and now you're coming back. Which I don't have any say on architectural, I think it's like a good, but don't try to say it happened two months ago and you just found out about it.
I don't know the exact time. I got projects all over the country. Thank you for the help. Listen, I can tell you one thing. I have nothing to hide. I'm an open book. I welcome you to come by the project any day. Process is not my strong suit. I built a great building. We do a nice job. We screwed up. I'll take the hit for that. Exactly what month, what day, who's called who, who shot who, I'm an open book.
Again, just to jump, no one's trying to inspect, our observation isn't trying to find one on you. You know what I mean? To be constructed to claim.
I get it.
But to the point of the Board, what they're trying to say, we just want full transparency.
I understand.
And you're going to be developing here in the city again. So we just want to make sure that you understand our process. And you're learning as part, as part of it.
I am. I am. So thank you.
Okay. You want to come back up?
Yeah.
Is there any, anything else?
No.
Okay. Does the, does the Board have any concerns, questions, thoughts?
Yeah, I have a, go to sheet A903. That's where we. Replace the two small windows over the stairwell, the entrance, with larger windows.
Correct.
And when you did that, you changed the whole look of that whole facade. Why didn't you keep the top of the windows at the same elevation rather than bump those up and make them?
Well, that's, the original design, the smaller windows? Well, that, that's, the original design, the smaller windows.
Yeah.
We did set that at the, the head, we aligned the head.
Yeah.
And we just felt the windows weren't adequate enough for that elevation. Um, we put these larger windows in, uh, the sill, you know, there's a natural slope to the parapet here, you see on the bottom, that caused us to raise those heads, um, where we wanted to maintain the proportions of the windows that we had adjacent to it, so we're keeping the same proportions of window height and width, and we put them in there, which caused the head to be raised, I mean...
It would seem to me that by putting a shorter window, keeping the head, uh, of all the windows at the same elevation, you would've gotten a much nicer look.
We can look at that.
Well, we see that they're not installed yet, so...
Okay.
That's still a possibility.
Either way, we're not, and you heard Paul, the fact that something might be installed, we're not suggesting that that means it can't change, we know that, so we're, we're willing to do whatever it takes.
Personally, I think that by, uh, putting the larger windows in, keeping the head height the same, you have to shorten the overall height of the window. I guess you get a much better look.
Even though it's got the peak there, Jen?
I'm sorry?
Even though it's got that peak? That's the area where the, I mean, it comes up.
You make the window shorter, you don't, instead of having a 60-inch window, you have a, you know, a 48 or, you know, a 42.
Yeah, we're trying to fill, we're trying to...
No, no, that...
Yeah, no, I was just, like I said, that, that's the area where the roof peaks up, it would seem like, you know...
Understand, but when you look from...
Perspectiveally, so I, I see your, I see your point of it.
From the street, you will see that. You will notice it.
Yeah, I mean, like, like, we just felt like, kept keeping the rhythm of the size of the windows that we had on the facade, maintained the rhythm, although the head changed, we felt it was more consistent, and then at the same time, like what Donna's saying is, we have that, that, that gable that raises up and creates more of a forehead, and we're trying to reduce that, so...
Understand, understand the reason for it.
That was the reason why we did it that way.
I, I actually kind of like that the windows are a little more elevated, it kind of follows the rhythm of the second level.
Mm-hmm.
Where the windows above the door followed the peak of the original building, now these follow the peak of the addition.
Okay.
I think it kind of follows the rhythm of, of the original building below.
Anybody else, any other board member have any, any, anything to say about the reduction of windows from two to one? Uh, I think that, what, there are eight windows or 10 windows that you reduced?
Yeah, I don't know the number off the top of my head.
There was like, there's a minimum of eight, uh, windows that were changed, from one to, from two to one.
And obviously, I definitely, I did prefer the original, um, I'm also always, I understand the layout issues, um, but I enter, but I would never have, and I know it's, it's a decision that's already in place, but in terms of having, you know, too much light or anything like that, that's not a concern. I mean, that I would have on an alley, or having a view of an alley, a lot of people like to have as much view and light.
As much light as possible.
Right. Cause it sounds as though that what you're mentioning is on, in both alleys, you're saying, alright, well, let's have less light, but in the front, let's have more light. I, I would have more, I would rather have more light in the alleys, because you're, you're more enclosed.
I'll ask, as a person who rents a tiny bedroom...
Go ahead.
That small window would be a godsend, cause I could finally have another wall to put furniture against.
That's how, that's, that, that's how you're looking at. That's fun.
As, as opposed to the bigger window?
Yeah, cause I, then I have one wall and I can't do anything with it.
Like in my house, in my living room, my couch is up against my window.
Mm-hmm.
So the sun just shines in my window right on the back of my couch, because I just have nowhere for furniture, because of a... So it's always, you, you, this board's very experienced, it's always a give and take between, we want a window there, but we need a closet there, or we want, you know, so it's a mixing of the needs.
Anybody, any other...
Can you give us a quantity?
Ten.
About ten, is it ten windows?
So ten windows were reduced from two to one.
Correct.
And then, then there is a change in, in, uh...
Three.
Two, in, uh, the front, in the, the ones in the front, uh, the ones facing Bond on, on the top, from small windows to the same-sized windows that you put on the, in the alleys. And that other set of windows that, that are going to look the same as they originally did, but on the plan, they don't look the same.
Correct.
And, and again, just for clarification, on the exhibit that was submitted to the board, you'll see, if you look really close, there might be siding between those windows, and that's inaccurate, we can correct that, that would be trim, it would not be siding.
Correct.
Even though the exhibit shows that. That was just more a computer drafting item.
Any, any other comments from the planning board members? Any comments from our professionals, or questions from the professionals?
The only thing I would have to add is if there's any additional questions, but Mr. Milstein, when he testified that short period, we should open it up.
Yes, when we open, we open up the questions from the public to both witnesses, why don't we say that?
Sure.
That just came in. Anybody, anyone? It sounds, it sounds, uh, well, we need to, we need to understand what the board members feel about reducing, reducing ten windows from two to one.
Excuse me?
Yes.
Chairman, do we just have cross just then, or we have a public comment as well?
That, that was not a public comment, no.
Okay.
Not a public comment.
Okay.
Cause I, I didn't get that we're done, done.
Yeah, just want to make sure we don't skip it, that's all.
We're done with, with, with Dan, but not done with the presentation. Are, do we have another witness? Or are we done?
No, we are done, unless the board has questions that we haven't answered yet.
Okay. All right, then, any, uh, any, any comments? Uh, can we open it up to, uh, to, to public comment before the board members make comments?
Sure.
Motion to open up comments to the public?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
All right, anyone from the public that would like to make any comments regarding these modifications?
Motion opposed. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it.
All right, it sounds as though we have a mixed bag of, of who is in favor of what here, it sounds like. Uh, so I'm not quite sure how, how we can make that determination.
Well, you can split out the issues.
All right, we have two, we have two.
In different categories and decide to vote on various categories, that's fine with me.
We have, we have two separate issues. The, uh, the ten windows that are sep, that are modified and moved to one window, do, uh, how do people, how do various people feel about that?
Barbara?
Yes?
Maybe you want to look at the issue of the floor plan first, because if...
That's fine.
If the floor plan is accepted, then that kind of drives the windows.
Okay. Um, does anybody not accept the floor plan, or have any issues with the floor plan? Any comments that they want to make about the floor plan changes that were mentioned?
No.
No, I think that...
That should seem better.
I think that, that there was a better, better choice. So I don't think that we have controversy there.
I like bedrooms to have windows.
Yes.
So...
Exactly. We like, we prefer bedrooms with windows. Okay, um, how about the, how, how does the board feel about the, the ten windows that are moving from two to one? Any, uh, anyone feel, feel strongly, I'm, I'm one way or another?
I mean, I'll just say again, that I, from an aesthetic, the aesthetics from the exterior of the building and the light and all that, I prefer the, to how it was. Um, however, I feel like the decision, I mean, was made, I realize it could be changed. Um, I believe the decisions were made for reasons in interior layout, you know, that, um, I, I, I wouldn't ask for it to be redone.
I, I actually feel the exact same way. Aesthetically, it looks nice with bigger windows.
Yeah.
But, I mean, realistically, you're never gonna see, really be seeing the side of the building from far away, and if it makes more sense for the interior layout, it might make sense to do it. The thing I'm trying to think about is, if this had been presented to us the first time around, with the smaller windows, I, I mean, I don't think these windows would have been any reason to not approve it. Um, so just cause they're changing from bigger ones to smaller ones, I, I personally don't see any reason to not approve it if that's what they want to do, I don't think it violates any, anything that, you know, it's normally a box we look to check out.
I feel the same, I feel exactly the same way, that aesthetically, I much prefer the doubles, all the way around. I think that that looks a lot better. I think that, that the, the, the point that they're both in alleyways, where it's not visible to the, truly not visible to the public, to see the building and how that, how it impacts the building, um, and that you feel that inside, that it makes a lot more sense to have one, um, I get it, uh, from that perspective. So do we feel like that, that's one part? So are we feeling okay with the, the two windows going down to one? Not hearing any?
Yeah, I think you pretty well spelled it out.
Okay. Now, all right, so we're okay there, now we have the, the front. Um, how do people feel about the, I know we've received, um, comments on both ways of saying, you know, should we, would, would we prefer to have the, the two smaller windows, to have them, uh, at the same level as the other windows are? Or would we, are we okay with the heightened windows? And because there's a peak there, that it's, it kind of flows with the building?
I'm okay with the height, with the height, the way they're...
The, the higher ones, so...
Yeah.
Because that middle is kind of different anyway?
Yeah, the, the peak in the middle, also the windows underneath it are already, already higher also, so I feel like it kind of continues that flow moving up, as well as the peak, it looks fine to me, and I think the big windows are better than the smaller windows.
In that particular situation?
Yeah.
Well, because of where it is in the building.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Anyone, anyone else?
I just have a question.
That makes sense to me, I agree.
What's behind those two windows? Is that a...
It's part of the kitchen area and the, uh...
Of a unit?
It's a living area.
Yeah. They're here along that wall, here.
On what, 302?
Yeah, 302.
Isn't that 308?
If you, one and two, or just two?
Yeah, are we on the right side of the building?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry.
The issue that, the issue you don't see him, and I can fix that, is that when we build these models and we cut them, we cut the floor at a certain height, so they're probably above the cut line, so you're not seeing them graphically on the floor plan.
But they're there.
Can you show us where they are?
They're gonna be right in the middle, so they'll be right in the kitchen wall.
We can see.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. See, here, see this bump out here?
Yes.
That's one.
That's the small window.
No, that's the bump out up here.
For the...
Column.
The column on the facade, the, the blank panel.
All that, okay, so those are the, those are the columns, and maybe between the columns.
And then the other one is over here.
Gotcha.
So it's in between them, in here.
Gotcha.
So that, so that particular unit's going to get increased amount of lighting...
Yes.
For kitchen and living rooms.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's a better...
Yes.
That's a better deal for that apartment, for that particular apartment.
And that unit changed, because again, remember how he said, they flipped the elevator and the stair?
Yes.
So it used to be a closet in that area.
It was a squish-in.
Yes.
Yeah, it's much more...
I'm, I'm...
It's interior.
Mm-hmm. And we have the height, cause we have the trusses, so this is all, it's all vaulted in that area.
I, I, I think it's a nice...
I understand.
Yeah.
I, 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 especially because of what's going on inside, I think that...
I think I should have little...
Yeah, I think that that's, uh, that's an improvement.
The little windows were cute. There's no, right, I like them. But there's no, I, I see no reason to say no to that.
Right.
Yeah.
Any other comments from the, from the board members? No? No?
Sounds like you can vote on it as a whole.
Okay, I think that, I think that we can vote on them as a whole.
Yeah.
Um, and we don't have any, I don't believe that there are any, um...
Conditions?
Any conditions, uh, outside of just ensuring that that trim is...
Correct.
That everything looks uniform.
And we'll submit a revised exhibit, it's hard to see, but when you see it, you'll be able to see it.
But we want to make sure that once it's built, that those, you, those, all those windows look the same.
Yeah.
Correct. You know, even though there's a little, you know, there's a little issue there. I don't know if that's a condition, I don't know what, what that would be.
Yeah, I, I've got it in here, that we're gonna get a revised A1 that'll show the trim.
Yep.
Uh, and...
Yeah, that's, that's...
It's the usual, there's some usual clauses in, in the amendments, but we go, we cut to the chase, I get right to the particulars.
Okay. All right. All right, can I get a motion for approval of this app, of the application with these modifications that were presented to us today?
Barbara, just quickly, the members that are actually eligible.
Mm-hmm.
James, Michael, Barbara, Daniel, who is absent, uh, Mayor Moore, Jen Souter, and Jeremy, who is absent. Those, the original resolution.
Okay.
So that's who's allowed to vote, so John?
John's voting.
Yeah, unless, uh, other members have...
I'll second it.
...read the transcripts.
I'll second by Barbara.
That's fine. Who moved it?
John.
John Moore.
Thank you, and Barbara, you seconded?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, James Benano?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Jen Souter?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonan?
Yes.
Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Continue to build a beautiful building.
Okay. Do you want to take a quick five minutes?
Five minutes. Five minutes.
Okay, second, anyone?
Second.
Second.
I'll second. Okay, Jen? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed?
All right. Five minutes, 10 of, we're starting again.
Hi, everyone. I will take roll call. James Benano?
Here.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Here.
Jim Henry?
Here.
Mayor John Moore?
Here.
Jen Souter?
Here.
Kathy Mulligan?
Here.
Vice Chair Mike Goonan?
Here.
And Chairwoman Barbara Kerzak?
Floor is yours.
Have you reviewed the notices for the next, uh, application, they're in proper form.
Thank you.
Good evening again, board, again, Michael Videillo for the record. I'm representing the applicant on the next matter, this is Jamal Braverman Building LLC is the applicant. The applicant is seeking preliminary and file major site plan approval for property located at 1201 Memorial Drive. Uh, this property's been designated as an area in need of redevelopment, it is subject to your 1201 Memorial Drive redevelopment plan.[1436.26] Uh, the property's currently vacant and it's bounded Memorial Drive onto the east, Fourth Avenue to south, and Fifth Avenue to the north. The proposal, as you'll hear in more detail soon, is for a five-story mixed use, uh, development. Uh, it's to include one hundred and twenty-six residential units. Twenty-six of those will be affordable units, approximately two thousand square feet of commercial space on the first floor, and it'll have customary associated improvements, landscaping, streetscaping improvements. It'll also include a parking garage mostly under the building, but some of it adjacent to the building, for a hundred and thirty-one total parking spaces. And, um, with me here this evening, I, if it pleases the board, I'd like to start with a representative from the applicant. Um, and I also have my architect here this evening to go through and explain to the board the architecture, the elevations that are proposed. The whole project has been designed in accordance with the redevelopment plan. The intent of the applicant during the design process was to avoid any variances and to comply with the plan, which I believe they've done. Um, there are a few design waiver slash exceptions that have been noted in your board consultants' reports that we can also talk about. And if it pleases the board, we'd like to start. My civil engineer for this matter is not here tonight. We do intend to revise our plans in certain respects to comply with the comments in the review letters, um, to, to, to take the intent of those comments. So we do anticipate getting a revised set to you, but a lot of the architecture that you're gonna hear spoken about tonight is not really subject to those revisions. So we'd like to put that testimony on if it pleases the board.
Okay, so you're gonna have your architect come up?
Yes.
Okay.
And Paul, would you like to start briefly and, uh, describe for?
Oh, two seconds. Okay. Paul, once again, right hand, solemn swear affirm, testimony about the given this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do, thank you.
And you are still Paul Mills.
I am still Paul Mills. Yes, sir.
And your title?
Just so we have separate records. Vice President Douglas Development Corporation?
Right, thank you.
Okay.
And describe briefly with the board what, uh, what the intent here.
Uh, so the intent here is, uh, we've, we've gone through quite a lengthy process with the, uh, the mayor and council previously on the redevelopment plan. So we just want to continue to follow through, this is our planning board process. So again, um, I, I think there's, there's a couple items that were, were left open in the redevelopment plan for, subject to the planning board, which is gonna deal with ingress and egress, and I think that's gonna be a lengthy discussion. We intend to have the traffic engineer available, there'll be testimony and cross-examination, et cetera. But the thought was tonight to, uh, since we had to come back, but at least get the architecture up here and get as far as we can, being respectful of your time, and, and then we'll deal with the engineers at the next hearing, it was a thought. So, there we go, thank you.
Okay.
Any questions? Before he runs away?
Any questions, planning board members? Professional? Public? Questions? Okay?
All right. So another Dan? Same company? Different last name? Different person? Sir, please raise your right hand. Solemn swear affirm, the testimony about the given this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
And your name again?
Daniel Zanetto, Z-A-N-E-T-O.
You've appeared before, is correct?
Yes.
And you are a licensed architect?
Correct.
And you are, you're licensed in good standing?
Yes.
Nothing has changed since the last time you testified before the board?
No.
All good.
So, so Dan, you've heard our brief introduction and how we, uh, propose to proceed tonight. So with that in mind, can you please describe, uh, the proposed structure for the board?
Sure, so, um, as Paul has kind of mentioned in the, uh, his introduction.
So the way you were, let me just clarify for our record, I'm sorry to interrupt. So what you're displaying, this is part of the submission application, right?
Correct, these are the submitted plans.
Okay, so we're gonna, uh, as the board attorney indicated, we're gonna mark these as A1? Yeah, just identify them for us so we have them marked. I think we have a revision date on the cover sheet or something.
And the date is, uh, February eleventh?
I just want to make sure. Yeah, give us the I-D and D.
Yes, February eleventh.
Great.
Want me to mark this A1?
Yes, please. Marie, note that, please. Thank you.
Okay, so the, the building here is, uh, 1201 Memorial Drive. It's part of the 1201 Memorial Drive redevelopment plan. And we've had a lot of back and forth and, uh, input from the board, uh, the, the council, and we've met the neighbors, and we've, you know, it's, it's been a process of years to get to this point, and we think that all of that input has really been helpful to create the building that we have here. Um, we think it's a beautiful building. It's five stories, uh, one hundred and twenty-six dwelling units on the upper floors. The ground floor is all parking and, uh, three, uh, retail spaces along Memorial Drive. And, uh, we tried to give it a nice urban feel, a mix of materials. We're using, um, thin brick facade and hardy panel and siding, a mix of, uh, some metal trim and corrugated metal panels, uh, lots of glazing, and interesting facade, um, details to, to provide rhythm and shadow lines. So, um, just quickly looking at the existing site here. So these are some photos of the, the vacant site as it is now. This is a view from across Memorial Drive on the opposite side of the tracks, looking towards the, uh, the site. This one here, looking south from Fifth Avenue, across the site. Right now, there, there's nothing built, uh, it's been cleared and fenced. Um, looking north from Fourth Avenue. And then this is the corner of Fourth and Memorial, looking northwest. And lastly, the view from the northeast corner, looking southwest, this is Fifth and Memorial. So I'll start with the, the floor plans, this is the ground floor. The entrance, the vehicle entrance to the building happens on Fourth Avenue. You enter the, uh, the main drive into the parking area, where we have a hundred and thirty-two parking spaces. And we're providing EV as required by the state. And, um, they're not shown here, but I know we do have some, some spaces marked for, um, ride share, uh, drop-off, Uber, DoorDash, those type of spaces. Will be, there will be an area designated for those uses.
I'm sorry for the interruption, I want to swear in my staff again, close in case it would have some interaction. Solemn swear affirm, testimony about the given this matter, the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Please identify yourselves for the record and your affiliation with the board.
Donna Miller, board planner.
Sam Avaki, board engineer.
Sorry for the interruption. Thank you.
But I'm gonna continue to interrupt. Um, Dan, can you just clarify the total number of parking spaces?
A hundred and thirty-two parking spaces?
Yeah, we're not as good as, there's a discrepancy, there's one hundred and thirty-one.
Every time I count them.
Okay. We'll, we'll be sure to, uh, to look at that and revise as needed. Um, so again, just going through the, the floor plan, we have, the, the gray shaded area here is the parking that is under the building. And then at the west end of the, the site, we have some parking that is not underneath the building, extends beyond the footprint of the building. Uh, along Memorial Drive, we have three small retail spaces, uh, ranging from about four hundred square feet to nine hundred square feet. The main pedestrian entry or lobby is on Fifth Avenue. Uh, there's a, a lobby space, uh, mailroom packages, and, uh, there's bike storage also on Fifth Avenue. That happens the, the corner here. So this is vertically, uh, oriented racks. Also located on the ground floor is a secondary lobby, and this is, uh, another elevator, stairs, and then some utility spaces and a trash room. So moving up through the building, we come to the, the first floor. And this floor has a unit count of thirty-six units. Uh, there's a mix of market rate, uh, studio, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and then, uh, a few affordable bedrooms, uh, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom. So there are eight affordable units on this level. And there's also a center courtyard. So this is an amenity space that can be used by any of the tenants. Um, it's just a, like a lounge area to get outside, get some fresh air.
And that courtyard's open to the sky? It's not covered?
That's open, direct to the sky, correct.
Is there anything out there other than pavers and those two planters?
Uh, well, I'm sure we'll, we'll have site furniture and, you know, benches and tables, but it's all kind of freestanding, nothing's fixed, so it can be rearranged and moved. Same with the, the planters are intended to be freestanding planters, not built-in, so that they can be reconfigured as needed. But, uh, it is just a pa, pedestal paver, um, courtyard.
You're talking pervious imperious?
That would be, it's, it's all, it's all, actually part of the roof system, so.
It's part of what?
It's part of the roof, it's not, it's not a pervious system.
If you're in the parking garage, that's the roof over your car.
The parking gar, right.
Okay.
Do you have the, um, the 3D rendered image showing the roof so you can see the opening on the top of the roof?
Sure.
Look at the. There you go. So if you go down in that center section, you wouldn't get all the way down to the ground, ground level, you'd hit that courtyard, which is above the parking area. So it's elevated one floor, the outdoor courtyard, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so, um, the units along Fourth, Fifth, and Memorial Drive, um, some of them do have balconies. On Fourth and Fifth, they're projecting balconies. Along Memorial, where they occur, they're recessed balconies. The two corner units on Fourth and Memorial and Fifth and Memorial have wraparound balconies. Moving up to the, the second residential floor, it's a very similar layout. The units, um, again, uh, having, uh, balconies along Fourth and Fifth and Memorial Drive, the interior units have views into the courtyard. And again, there's a mix of market rate and affordable units on this floor. And again, this is the, the third floor, moving up, it's a similar layout to the floors below. Again, there's a mix of affordable and market rate units. And then lastly, moving up to the fourth residential floor. Now this floor is different in that we only have a single loaded corridor. So there's, there's nearly half as many units, right, and they're set further back from the, the frontages. Um, we also have a shared roof terrace area that any of the occupants can have access to this area as well. So all the tenants will have access to the center courtyard on the first residential floor and the shared roof terrace on the upper residential floor. The, the private units on this floor have access to, each have access to a private roof terrace, where this will have a pedestal paver system, and, uh, it's enclosed by a, a railing at each private terrace and a screen wall between the units, a privacy screen, six foot high.
Does that six-foot wall extend all the way to the, the entire depth of the terrace?
Uh, I believe the height steps down as it, uh, gets past a certain distance. So if we, let's see, I, I think it extends eight feet from the wall, and then it drops down to a railing.
Can you?
So the privacy, not being able to look into your neighbor's window, essentially.
But, oh, you had a question?
Yeah, while we're here, can you just tell us the, the height of that, the end railing and the height of the parapet? How do those compare?
The height of the railing would be three foot six above the pedestal paver, and the parapet, I believe, is three foot six above the main roof.
Which is a couple of inches lower?
Yeah.
How thick's the pedestal paver? A few inches?
Uh, just a few inches, I, I couldn't say for sure, um, probably about six inches.
You wouldn't see the railing either, right?
No, I, everything is set back. Um, you can kind of see, this is the, the, the screen wall, correct. Um, I don't know if I have a good section of that, but you can see the distances here that we're talking about. The front of the penthouse units are from Memorial Drive, thirty-three foot six from the front. And the, the railing is fifteen feet, five inches from the front of the building.
And that, that roof structure, the, there was a roof structure above the terrace garden that's pretty visible in the elevation view? Like a, like a pergola type of, uh?
Uh, correct.
Cover sheet, on the cover sheet, that's the right?
Right, there's a, a metal pergola above the, the shared courtyard of the roof level. And then the mechanical units are proposed for the roof above the, uh, the fifth floor units. That's where the, the main, um, mechanicals for the, the units, the, the retail.
And is there a, is there a parapet there?
Common areas. Uh, there, there's no parapet, and if there are any issues, we intend to do a sightline diagram to show the, um, what's visible from the right-of-way. And if there's anything that's visible, we would provide screening for those units. Um, these are set back quite a ways from, from the property line and from the building face. So one thing I, I didn't mention on the ground floor and the, the footprint of the building is, you know, we've set the building back, I believe, twenty-five feet, twenty-six foot, um, from the property line to give a generous setback. And the goal here was to kind of align the, the face of the building with the face of the existing buildings along Fourth and Fifth. So, um, there's gonna be generous landscaped areas here, uh, large setbacks on Fourth and Fifth. And then we're, you know, closer to the property line on Memorial Drive. Um, and that, that will help with, uh, the visibility of those units. Um, we'll get to some of the 3D perspectives where you can see that the, the top floor of the, uh, the building nearly disappears from the, uh, pedestrian scale. Uh, moving along to the elevations, the main building materials here that we're showing are, uh, a thin brick veneer in a, in a red brick and also a darker gray, uh, kind of charcoal-colored brick. Uh, that's what you see on the corners here in this gridded pattern. We also have some fiber cement panel, um, with reveals, and, uh, there are, um, areas of recess and columns that bump out to create shadow and detail. On the upper floor, we're showing a fiber cement siding. All the windows have black frames. This, uh, lobby element, so the lobby stacks vertically on all the floors, it'll have large windows into the, the elevator lobby space and the stair tower. This space is clad in a corrugated metal panel with a detail above the, around the entry and, uh, storefront glass framing, also black framed. Your retail spaces have, uh, a series of storefront framing, spandrel panel, and clear glazing. Each of these areas also has a canopy with some signage areas for the tenants.
While, while we're there, the, the windows on that lobby area, that rightmost window, you said, looks into a stairwell? So are we gonna see bright lights in there all the time?
There's a minimum, uh, lighting that needs to happen because it is an egress stair, but those could be put on occupancy centers so that they dim to the minimum level when no one is in that stair. And then when someone opens the door and goes into the stair, they would turn a little bit brighter. But, uh, they don't need to be at full blast twenty-four seven.
Yeah, we need, we need that. That on our list, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Uh, would the board consider, um, like, maybe one's a frosted panel? And the other one's a clear glass, so we get some of that, you know, visual whatever, but it's also, um, obscured slightly, so it's not as intensive, maybe that cuts some of the light intensity as well?
Well, which, if we're, like, which specifically would you be talking about when you're going?
So Dan, could you go to the, uh, lobby layout on the upper floor for that stack? So let's take a look at the space.
This is the upper floor, right?
So there's a window in the stair tower?
There's a, two windows, there's, one window in the stair tower, one just outside the stair tower, and kind of in the lobby here. And then this is the taller storefront glazing curtain wall.
Okay, so, so what?
So in the stair tower, it'll probably be on a sensor?
Right.
Stair tower could be on a sensor.
And what would be on the, on the, that area, right?
In the, the elevator lobby area?
No, 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 the, the long three.
No, 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 so, so that implied sort of balcony space, that's a, that's the, that's where the triple, is that where the triple?
Yeah, where the triple windows are. Is that where the triple windows are?
Yes.
How is that getting lit? Or is that getting lit?
That will be just the, the corridor of the building will be lit. Um, I think that needs to be, you know, twenty-four hours, uh, you know, people need to be able to.
And on that level, you've got the access to the terrace, so it's kind of a busy, has the potential for being a busy, um, hallway lobby space.
I still don't get what's in that, the three windows, what's there?
It's, it's basically just a big hallway in front of the elevator and in front of the door to the roof terrace.
But there's, but there's five.
It's open to below.
It's open to below? That's what that is? The three windows are open to below, and then there are two windows next to it?
That are on the actual facade?
So this, this is the, the tall, three-window glazing.
When you can just look down, that's what that is?
Right.
Okay, so what kind of lighting so that that's not bright, that's not offensive of people walking by? What?
Do we maybe frost that?
What's that going to, what's that gonna look like? Cause that's, I mean, it's a concern.
No, it's a good question.
To say that you don't want anything bright that's just like a beacon.
It's a good question.
And it's not really.
There's the front of the building, so the look down, where you can look down below are those three windows in the center. Then the far right single window, Dan, that's in the stairwell, the far right single window.
And that's that little nook next to the stair?
This is, this is the stair, this is just outside the stair, and this is.
So, I, I think, I understand your concern, right? Their concern, especially late at night, very bright, intense lighting, just shining out all the time. I think there's a lot of things that the applicant can do.
There are things that can be done.
Yes, totally can be done. We don't want to destroy the aesthetics. You know, we don't want to say, just spray paint that black, we don't want like, but, but we, it's, it's an important concern.
We could also look at an option for a shade that could be operated on a timer or, or a fritted glass, something that would.
You'll be, you'll be able to come back, and you understand what our concern is.
Yes, we are.
And also that, I would also assume, and I'm guessing the other planning board members also might agree, is that you don't want the lighting in all three of them to be all different.
No, no.
Because they're all together.
Right.
You know, you want it to be similar.
A lot of diversity is okay, but yeah, you don't want every window looking different.
So the three panels that are together, are they open to the hallway behind them?
Yes.
Oh, they're open to the hallway?
So the lights need to be shielded and?
Yes.
Yes, I mean, these will be downlights in the, in the corridor.
Right.
Yeah, they're.
Oh, okay.
We have some wiggle room here, cause I'm looking, across the street here is, is Aiden's, right? It's, it's not houses right across.
Across the street is the sunrise, sunrise mall.
The windows are illuminated, it should be okay, as long as we're not getting something really bright headlights shining out.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
But you understand what our concern is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, that's fine.
So we'll definitely talk to your professionals, come up with changes to try to meet the spirit.
As long as we're on this, go to the Fourth Avenue lobby? Okay, so that's just in the stair tower?
This is just in the stair tower.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the same concept.
But there's not nearly as much.
This is Fourth Avenue.
There's not as much going on.
The other side, the other side, right.
Yeah.
Just the stairs.
Across the street, there's.
Yeah, where the doors are.
You see, the doors are closed, yeah, there they are. In that view, right.
Okay. Any other questions on Fifth Avenue facade?
No.
Okay. So I should note that the area that's marked with this kind of crosshatch pattern, the blue and the red, that is areas intended for public art, um, you know, to be coordinated with the city. Uh, we have that on Fifth, we have it along Memorial and several spots. And then, uh, we do not have it on Fourth. We have the garage entry happening there. So there is opportunity for public art on this project. We're also showing areas of, uh, along Memorial Drive where this is an open, uh, naturally ventilated garage, so we have an open air requirement that we need to meet. And these bright colored areas are intended to be, again, um, this is a product called a flex facade, where it's a screen that can be printed with a large scale graphic and that image could also be, uh, you know, commissioned by an artist in coordination with the city. So, along Memorial, we intend to have a lot of opportunity for public art. There's the three tenant spaces, right? We saw, uh, this on the corner of Fifth and then right in the center of the building, along Memorial, and then at the corner of, um, Fourth.
Can you go to Fourth, the, or Fourth, the view from on the Fourth? What's that, what's the garage looking like? Or is that someone else?
The garage doors?
Yeah.
The garage doors are shown in the closed position here? Dan, can you just point out?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's all right, we have a technical Hold on, hold on, all right, so let it catch up.
So these are the garage doors here, shown closed.
And what are you, what are you proposing that, that, that material?
Are those tinted?
Is it tinted, is it clear, is it glass, is it?
Yeah, uh, these are proposed as solid metal doors with embossed panels.
Okay.
It does say, sorry to interrupt, but the area for public art on, uh, oh, I'm sorry, I just read the label wrong. So those louvers don't have, those are where you're saying they don't have it on Fourth? Louvered screening?
On Fourth, these are louvered screens here.
But not, um, not the same treatment as Fifth that has
No, the flex facade is only happening on Memorial Drive. So that happens on these four panels, right? One, two, three, and four. And then these areas, one, two, three, and four are just wall areas that could be dedicated for public art.
And then on Fifth, there was the one designation.
Fifth, there's the one next to the lobby.
And there's just no room on Fourth, is that, no?
There seems to be.
Yeah, this was actually one of my thoughts. It is that, it is the Fourth Avenue ground level facade is very, I'm going to say not interactive.
Yes, not interactive.
Uh, and I know there will be landscaping there, but all of those dark louvers, is there any reason we can't do that fabric screening there?
That's fine, we'll insert the louvers and create a little depth of the screen across.
Yeah, think of something to brighten up Fourth.
Because I want to give you guys a lot of credit for the amount of dark art at ground level. It's fantastic, it's really fantastic. This, and I know we're being picky, but this, I think, calls for it.
Right, or even something on the gray area to the left of the garage? Because you have a nice sized wall to the left there.
Could be right here.
Just think of something that
We'll work on that.
That you can light in.
Yeah, we can look at that for sure.
That would be great.
What's the function of the louvers?
The louver is just to create security for that garage. We need the opening, but we don't want to just put a fence there or something. So it's an architectural louver. It is, but it's not, it's not connected to a duct or anything like that. It's just for natural ventilation of the garage, so it's just an opening. It is ventilation, but it's not ducted in any way.
But they want secure
There's no equipment connected to it, it's not going to be blowing hot air or anything. It's just for natural movement of air throughout the garage. And then lastly, this is the rear elevator, or west elevation. And, uh, this is where the building is open below and the parking kind of extends beyond the footprint of the building. And, uh, the materials here, we have, uh, some of them are wrapping and then we have the hardy siding, um, above.
Can I just ask a question here? So the, um, the front three sides, the three sides that face the street all seem to have pretty consistent materials and it looked very attractive from my, in my opinion. This backside, you chose to introduce three new colors. What was the rationale for that?
I think, uh, we were trying to give it some variety and then also, um, to reduce the amount of the brick and, uh, you know, when you have a facade that's not really grounded to the the, uh, the ground level, you know, this is up on, above the parking podiums. So you want to use a material that's naturally kind of suited for that as opposed to having kind of floating brick. So that's why, uh, we switched it to the lap siding here. And the introduction of the color was just to give it some more variety. And these colors are also, um, used in the courtyard, I don't have the courtyard elevations.
That we want to see too. We'd want to see
The courtyard?
What the interior of the courtyard looks like to in coloring.
We can provide that, absolutely.
Yeah, I agree that I, having, having different colors on the back, it just seems, seems a little odd.
This is the material, the boards, I, I mean, it makes sense, everything you just said makes sense. And actually, the colors, when you look at it, it looks
But this is the regular side, not the back side.
And this is the back.
Oh, this is, I'm sorry, this back, it looks very different than this.
That's the back, that's the back, right there.
It looks different than what's on here.
Yeah, I'm not saying I dislike it, it's just, it's different.
Right there, right there.
What is the white strip on the bottom?
So the cars, you'd be looking under the building, so
Right, oh yeah, where these dashed Xs are.
Dan, don't forget, there's a cornice there.
There's a trim for the, you know, where the siding starts.
Go to the 3D one, you have the 3D one in the back is helpful, go down here. So, right there, so if you zoom in there, see how that's the white strip is really looking under into that parking area? Back.
There'd be fence, right?
Right, and there's a six foot high fence that will go around the property line here.
Is there, uh, what's, is that a residence?
This is an adjacent residence.
And obviously landscaping isn't on some of those images. Some images, we've put some demonstrative landscaping. Even this isn't necessarily the finished landscaping plan. For the 3D rendering process, you know, you get some plant life in there, but I don't know, Dan, has that been carefully matched to the landscaping plan or?
Uh, no, in, in, you know, in spirit, this is what, uh, you know, is shown on the landscaping, but it's by no means, you know, a hundred percent accurate to the plant type and color and things like that.
And you can see the pergola there, that's right, that's your rooftop.
Yeah, the roof terrace, the shared roof terrace is in this area of the pergola. Um, you've got the four levels of residential. And then, as I was saying earlier, the fifth level is set back far enough that in this view, we can't even see that fifth level. And also, you can get a sense of the large setbacks that we have here. So there's a large dimension from the curb to the property line and then we have, you know, another twenty-five feet. So that's all, um, paved lounge areas for, you know, if this is a retail space, that could be, you know, a restaurant of some sort, a cafe, and they could have an outdoor seating area here. And, uh, there's also some large landscape fire retention. I don't want to speak out of order because, oh, we'll let the landscape or the civil engineer speak about it, but large areas of landscaping on either side of the building here. This is the view of that stair tower that we were talking about, the lounge and the elevator. Across Fifth, uh, right, so we're kind of standing where the Sunset Mall is. Here you see the projecting balconies on Fifth Avenue, corner balconies, and again, the shared roof area. This is a view from Memorial Drive, looking from across the tracks. This is a bit of an elevated view, so you do kind of see that fifth floor from here. But if we were standing, um, you know, on the sidewalk here, that also would kind of disappear, you wouldn't be able to see that upper floor. This here is just a view from, uh, kind of that outdoor space on Fifth Ave, looking at the retail and also the lobby area beyond.
That's one of the art murals, just a sample of what might be on.
Right, yeah, and these are all just kind of illustrative and not what would actually be there. That would all be coordinated with the city. Close up detail of the lobby and the canopy. There would be some signage here, um, this is just pin mounted letters, I don't believe we're asking for these to be illuminated in any way. And again, the signage here is all just kind of placeholder names and whatnot, but the intent of the sign area and the dimensions, I believe we're showing that. And that's called out on our elevations. This is Memorial Drive and this is where we have recess balconies. Um, you can see there's detail along the facade to have some recesses and areas for shadow lines. Again, the public art area and then the flex facade, kind of graphic printed screens as well. And that is all the images I have to share.
So the renderings, I would say, aesthetically, I think this building is very, very good looking. The renderings are all from Memorial and Fifth. We don't see Fourth or really the west side of it. So I would ask when you come back, if we can see the Fourth Avenue side? And then, kind of from the back, because we're talking about those colors. If we can see a rendering maybe from, like, northwest or southwest with the fence? Because I kind of, I can't really picture what it looks like back there with the fence and the garage and then these other colors above it.
And also something from the courtyard, so you can see what the courtyard looks like in, inside.
Sure.
And this project's going through Energy Star multifamily?
Or the equivalent, I would think there's
I'm sorry.
Energy Star for multifamily?
Yes.
It's going through the program? It's, that's the program that you're going through?
The specific program, I'll clarify it the next year, if it's actually in the Energy Program or whatever.
Can I ask some questions about the ground level, the kind of flow on the ground level? Um, so one of my questions is, there's these three retail spaces that don't seem to connect into the garage. So where, where does their trash go?
Is that trash room for just residential?
And then similarly, that trash room seems like it's only accessible from outside. Is there, I'm just curious why some of these ground floor spaces aren't connected?
Yeah, I think that the retail spaces would have to take their trash out and then into the trash room.
What do, what do the, uh, what do the residents have?
Residents have a trash chute on each floor. So there's a trash room.
Is that on each floor?
That's on each floor.
All right, so it, so it goes into that trash room?
Goes into this trash room, into the chute, and down to a bin in the collection room on the ground floor.
But still, the only way you can get into that trash room is from the exterior.
The, the trash room on the ground floor
The trash room
Right.
Is only accessible from outside.
Correct.
But a resident would never go in?
No, they would use the chute.
Right, right.
Yep, they would use the chute, they would dump into that room.
So for purposes of trash removal, which, where is?
Comes out of that room.
What avenue is that, Fourth or Memorial?
That's on Fourth.
That's on Fourth.
Right next to the garage doors, right next to the garage doors. We're gonna, we're gonna modify that elevation slightly in accordance with your comments with coloring and massing and maybe mural or screening, so that whole elevation will change a bit.
And then while we're here, this elevator, is this a resident elevator or is this a service elevator?
It's a resident elevator. There's two sets of elevators, two elevators.
And then my last question
Yeah, they're both sized, you know, adequately for
My last question about this ground floor is, so the bike room, so, um, can you just walk me through the route? If I have a bike and I want to put my bike in there, can I go out in the back of the garage? Is there, is there a gate in the fence or am I going out the garage door?
You're going out the garage door, but, um, this is kind of an open bike room, right? We just need kind of a wall to hang these bike racks on, they're vertical bike racks. You kind of lift the bike up and hook it onto the wall and they, we hang them vertically, so there's space for seventeen on this wall, fifteen here, fifteen here. And you would
You can't get out right there?
Yeah, you can go to the lobby.
Parking garage or you don't?
Inside the garage.
Yeah, there's a fence here, so, I mean, we can look at, add an access if that's desired.
Right, we're just asking, like, it's kind of like, what's the, what's a way for the person to get their bike out? Is it always out to Fourth?
No, there's the lobby.
Or you can just go out through the lobby and that's it.
I asked, because in my building, I have to go through like four doors to get my bike out, so I never use my bike. But if there's like a way for simpler egress with your bike, fine. I don't know what it, you know, maybe going on garage door actually is not difficult, so, as long as there's a button.
In the rain, it's great.
Dan, can you speak a little bit to, um, why there's, there's no access from Memorial? I mean, that's kind of a plan requirement.
You mean, like a, like a, like a door, like a lobby door or something like that? Is that what you're saying?
The primary building entrance shall face Memorial Drive.
This is different than, this is just different from driveways. This is distinguished from driveway, so this is more non-driveway entrance.
Right, so you have this entrance into this little retail space, but it doesn't go into the building?
Yeah, I, I think this is, you know, we've had discussions with, um, the council and with neighbors and there's been some back and forth. You know, we used to have the lobby, the pedestrian lobby on Fourth and we had a drive that went from Fourth and Fifth. This is kind of where we've landed. I can't say for sure why. I know that the parking entry, the traffic engineer can certainly speak on
Yeah, I don't care about the driveway, I'm talking about the building entrance. It just seems like, that seems like, you know, that was a plan requirement.
Is this only shown on the, uh, the concept plan? Is this where it was? I don't
I don't know where it came from, but it's in the, it's in the plan.
But is this where it was on the concept plan?
The, the concept plan and this plan are the same.
Was what was shown to the
So what was included in the redevelopment plan is this location for the lobby.
So I understand your point and we can look into it, but it was part of the layout that was shown to the council and ended up coming out of council as part of that. And there are some entrances, is it possible to adjust the commercial entrances?
Yeah, I was just curious if there was, you know, some sort of conversation or something where there was a diverted from that, okay. Um, let's see.
While we're on the ground level, can you tell us where the meters are going to be?
The meters?
Can you tell us where the meters are going to be?
Uh, the meters, I believe, are happening in this striped area here.
In the striped area?
Yeah.
Or on the outside wall of the striped area?
Gas meters, yeah, along this wall. And, uh,
Inside, inside.
Electric would be inside in this room.
Okay.
I mean, the gas meters are into the parking garage or out to Fifth Avenue?
Yeah, I mean, we'll have to coordinate that with the utility.
Well, where, where, where would you, when they say, well, where do you want it?
Proposing inside on this wall so that they're not on the exterior of the building, but I know we often get pushback from the utility that they want exterior meters.
Okay, so hang on, so where?
Yeah, I would just say as a condition, I would say if they are exterior, especially there, I would want to make a condition that there's some sort of external screening required.
Can you make an inquiry in the interim?
We should.
Yeah, they're gonna be in the water. They're gonna be in your windows.
If so, it can be addressed.
I was gonna ask that too, it's not all electric then? For some reason, I thought this building was all electric.
I don't think so. This is gas, right? This is gas?
I'm not sure about that. I think, well, I thought it was actually electric.
Okay, we can confirm it. We'll confirm it.
Yeah, I remember that from earlier.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll get clarification on the meters, you know, for all the utilities, gas, if there is gas, electric or water as well.
What's the size, square footage of the trash room?
On the ground floor?
Yeah. Is it enough to hold what it's supposed to hold?
There's some rules as to how, how many days or how many weeks it's supposed to be available.
I think I had calculated that.
I don't have the number in front of me.
Did either one of you find that to be an issue when, in your reports? The size of the trash room?
My calculation is, for the residential, it complies, but there's a question about whether there's adequate storage for the commercial tenants.
Okay, so there might not be adequate storage for commercials, so you're gonna have to tell us what you're, what's gonna happen with that when you come back.
And did you say the size of the parking stalls? Eighteen by one. Yeah, I think the site engineer can tell you exactly, I don't have it in front of me.
They're eighteen by nine, it's on the site, so there are eighteen by nine.
Now, this is not an architectural question, but if we're talking about size of trash room, we need to know if it's public or a private hauler, which, just so someone can tell us about that.
Right, we'll, we'll have more detail on trash room size and operations when we come back.
And so, are you okay, John?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. The, so we're talking about that, we have 131 parking spaces? 131, 132, it's up for discussion as to what it really is?
We'll leave clarity on that, it might be an error on the plan.
I'm sure you'll be counting that up. So are we saying that there's, so 126 and then whatever is beyond that are the ADA ones? Is that right?
Yeah.
No, but that's, that counts into the 131, so that's six of them, so we have six ADA, 126. Worst-case scenario is you're okay or you're one old. Okay. The other thing, I have a couple of other things that are in, oh, you'd mentioned that there was like a drop-off lift, drop-off area when you first started going into the garage or, you know, some sort of ride share?
That was noted in the review letter, so, it's something that I know that we had looked at. I'll let the site engineer talk about it.
All right, because obviously I'd be concerned about security, so how does that work?
I would say how are they getting in and out?
Yeah, exactly, how are they getting in and out?
That was something we asked for in the redevelopment plan or?
We asked for it. Different building, and it was, the question was, how do they get in and out?
Yeah.
And it didn't make much sense how they're getting in and out and why they would even, how they would even know to do that.
How would they even know?
They're right at first every time.
And that's a discretionary item for the planning board, so we'll come back with more info on what we would propose and how it would work or where the spaces would be.
Is that something we want as a board?
It's not something that, I'm not, I'm not interested in creating a security risk.
It's going out of.
I was also saying it's working functionally.
It's going out of style, zip car model and stuff like that. It's been steadily declining, I mean, who knows where things go in the future, but in the beginning, when we, it was easy for us to find people to provide those services. It's not as easy anymore, they're not used as much, so.
Maybe because they're really hard to.
Yeah.
Get to.
The whole concept of them, right, it's difficult to just put a spot out front with spotlights on it and say, stop here for your zipcar, so then they say, well, then I don't want to put a zipcar there.
I'll just say, for me, I'd rather you use those spots for residents, so there's fewer people parking on the street.
Exactly.
Got a lot of Ubers, got a lot of Ubers running.
If that's a running discretion.
If we were gonna make a shared car space, I'd rather it be outside anyway, because it's accessible to more people.
Right, absolutely, I wouldn't wait, I wouldn't spend your time trying to figure that out.
And it's definitely discretionary, and we'll come back with more info, but it's right in the redevelopment plan, it's your discretion, we'll come back with more.
No, we're, we're, I don't think that. If you guys want it, come back.
But I don't want it. Everybody owns stock in zipcars.
Now, and can I assume that someone else will be speaking about how many spaces outside we're going to, we have today and how many we're going to lose or gain?
Right.
I think you'll come back with that, somebody else will come back. Okay, that's fine. Okay, the other thing that I just had a question about is like, I appreciate the courtyard view that you're coming in, so can I say that, or can we say, that there are no windowless bedrooms?
No.
There's.
No, you can't say that.
I can't say that?
No, you can't.
Okay, can I, can I, can we see where they are?
You should be wrong.
I want to be right.
This is something that we're gonna look at as well, right, with the plan review and the changes that. So we do have these, these corner units, they're one-bedroom, they're market rate units, so these aren't being assigned to affordables. But this is one case where we have a smaller one-bedroom unit, there's a living space on the corner with a window, and then there would be a bedroom, private bedroom, with a transom window here, so that you could have, you know, light and we'll have a transfer grill and there could be air movement. But again, if this is something that is not.
One window. No window in the bedroom.
No, that's why I'd just like to know.
The alternative would be to turn this into a studio.
There's, right now, it's just proposed that there's a few where the bedroom doesn't have a window, smaller.
If we could just find out, like, how many are we talking about? And do you have, like, let's say, now you said that there was a transom, which is great, and then how does the air move? Because there has to be some sort of ventilation. So tell us that.
Sorry.
Because we've had that in other presentations.
Right, but this is an inclusionary development, so it makes it hard for, under the UHAC rules, for prospective tenants to be placed in this building or be able to rent in this building when those units are in the building. They, like, if, if there's a regular affordable unit that's a normal size that they can't, needs repair or something, they have nowhere else to go in a comparable unit because that, that bedroom doesn't have a window.
Okay, and that's.
So there's, it's an equity thing. But in an inclusionary development, it makes it complicated because now there's, if they have to do mechanized ventilation.
They have to do something.
Utility cost that doesn't get properly adjusted across the regional cost for affordable units. It's a complicated thing in UHAC, anyway.
But does that get absolved if these are not affordable units?
No. Because it's an inclusionary building.
Right, so, so can you tell us that, what has to be done to these, these, those particular units, and I don't think that there are many of them, what legally has to be done? So that we, so that they're legal bedrooms?
Yep.
That.
We could talk to.
Just tell us what, tell, just, we want them to be right. We want, we don't want a windowless bedroom with no ventilation and you know.
Understood.
Right, there's, there's a requirement from the building code for a certain open area so that air can transfer throughout the unit.
That's all I'm asking.
For, for light and ventilation, and it's, it's not mechanical ventilation necessarily, but just that the, the air can move throughout the space.
Just tell us, that's what, that's what we want to, making it comfortable.
So right now, there are six one-bedroom units in the building.
There's six, six of those. Okay, so you just tell us, what are you gonna do with those six units that, that it's legal and it's comfortable for someone to live there? That's all I'm asking.
And there's one that has two.
And Donna, if they're not mechanically ventilated, does that absolve this?
I, I can't, so my office's architectural department have an interpretation of the building code that differs from some other people's interpretation of the building code, I'm not getting into it.
Okay, so that's, that's just a take back, okay?
Yes, we've got to take back.
For that?
We've had discussions on that issue.
Okay.
Not specifically with air, but with those regulations and the apportionment of the cost.
We just might want to make, make it right, whatever it is, we want to make it right.
But, and Donna, because the planner can't speak to that? I understand the challenge, but, I mean, I understand what the challenge is, but meaning like.
That's part of it, but we've also, again, my company's reading of the reg differs from other companies' reading of the reg.
Yeah.
And I, I can't speak to, you know, who's, who's right or less right.
No, I understand that, but who guys, who can give guns to the board?
Unfortunately, it's like, you gotta go to the construction official with the final, you know.
Well, I mean, it's something that we do fairly often, right? That we do it on other applications, and we ask for certain things to be done.
What do you mean do?
Meaning, meaning there are other applications that we've had where there are windowless bedrooms.
Right, I'm saying, but I'm saying about the affordable.
The only other inclusionary development.
Only one of the units had to have windows.
Right, but that's part of what's causing the complication because of the nature of the building. So I mean, it's really complicated, but I'm saying, who can get, who are, if it can't be Donna for that reason, which I understand, there's no other, we just have to figure it out.
Yeah, it sounds, you know how it sometimes floods stuff, we can't, we don't know what the DEA is?
D E P.
The D E P is gonna say, so we say they have to get approval from the D E P. I think we should just make a condition, they have to be approved by D C.
And we can bring more information.
It might be the affordable housing.
Yeah, we can bring more information to shed more light on the issue. Maybe there's still a question, but we could get you much closer to the fact, to the issue and the facts.
Okay. We have anything else from you?
All right, so let me just quickly.
Yeah, let's go, let's go, let's go to the, let's go to the report.
So if you could, when you do your visions, give me a calculation on the, what are we calling it? Transparent area on Memorial Drive, I guess we don't have quite as much, at least based on my calculation. So if you could just.
For the whole elevation or just the first floor or the whole?
It is the ground floor.
Penestrations like that?
Sixty percent of the ground floor facade between three and 10 feet above the grade is required to be transparent.
Are we looking, are we looking at a particular item on your report or is this something else from your notes?
No, no, it's item 3.2B.
Okay.
And I would just ask you to do that calculation for what's transparent and what's, and what's art, art or screen, because that requires an exception, I mean, I'd give you more of the.
That's how you make the decision, right? What's the trade-off? Is it?
Yeah, so if you could tell us the percentage of what's transparent and what's art.
Okay.
That would be helpful. Blah, 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 texture and shadow. So I believe you gave us adequate testimony for E, and the canopies, are they gonna have a matte finish?
They can have a matte finish.
Tell us, just tell us what you want to do.
What canopy?
Over the, over the entrances, there's the overhang, and the pergola, I guess, just whatever metal finishes, make sure the plans clarify it.
Yes, they'll have a matte finish.
Comply, so you're not doing that. Talked about the rooftop screening, you're gonna come back with some more details about the courtyard design. That's not you, that's not you, that's not you, that's not you.
Thank you for parsing out the, the architectural comments though, by the way. Sorry about that, but thank you.
Quite all right.
Thank you very much.
It's helpful. I'm sorry?
In your report, you point out there's no exceptions on COVID parking area at the southwest corner.
Yeah, I think I want parking testimony before I.
Okay, all right.
Signs, so we touched on that briefly, where you said you were gonna do those pin-mounted letters to identify the building.
Yeah, so we do have two kind of typical signage details of the elevation. So the, the canopy signs are non-illuminated, and then we do have some internally illuminated channel letters, so.
Okay, so over the garage, I think you have a sign?
Mm-hmm.
Fourth Ave?
Yeah, the Fourth Avenue.
Yeah. So is that also gonna be a building identification or is that gonna be more of a garage, do not enter, whatever?
Directional, yeah.
Okay, so then that should not be that way? Okay. Let me see, some individual social. And then what's going on on Fifth Avenue?
Which number are we on?
Ten, 10.2 or 10.3, is that right?
10.2.
10.2.
So you've got a, a commercial sign for the storefront, oh, is that going to have two signs? One on the Memorial side and one on the Fifth Avenue side? And same thing with the Fourth Avenue one, are they gonna have?
Yes.
Two signs?
Yes, the corner tenants have two signs.
Makes sense.
Donna, is there anything in, in the redevelopment plan about retail signage needs to have some sort of consistency or cohesive plan?
No, that, I think that's in the, in CBD only. Hang on, I'm just, I'm trying to skim this really quick. So you have two signs for the corner tenants, but I think you're only allowed to have one?
Yeah, they have a 16-foot, 20-square foot, so they're two different sizes. I didn't know if those were mislabeled, I don't, I don't mean to.
I think the intent was to have the building-mounted, illuminated sign on Memorial and then the pin-mounted canopy-mounted sign on Fifth.
So they are two, they're limited to, you're gonna have one 20-foot, 12-foot and one 16.
I, yeah, right now I'm showing.
So those, so those are gonna need relief.
So we would certainly be willing to discuss that with the board, that's the relief we proposed to request, but obviously, we're always open to discussion on that. They can support it like we're doing now to just clarify what's proposed, what's not proposed, what needs relief, what doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of what we're.
Yeah, I know in our, in our other districts, the ordinance allows, you know, for, if you have two sides, you get a sign on each side, but this redevelopment plan doesn't say that.
Yeah, I was also just to give my opinion, right? We, when we did the redevelopment plan, we specifically asked for retail on the corners to activate the corners. Having a side on each side.
I think it makes perfect sense.
So ask for the relief.
Yes. Well, or can one of them be a projecting sign rather than a wall-mounted sign? Because I think that's the other, the other thing. This does allow us for converting one to a projecting sign, so, you know, again, that's more pedestrian-oriented scale, so maybe that's on the Fourth Avenue side or?
Well, it should be on Fourth and Fifth.
And it helps our tenants maintain viability and attract better tenants.
Right, we want that.
There's, there's obviously a give and a take, you know, we have to be within certain, it has to be reasonable.
Absolutely. Does that take care of everything, Donna, on your report? For this, for this witness?
Well, do we wait?
So hang on, so that's the commercial sign, so then you have the building sign. Okay. Oh, and then is there a building address sign?
We would certainly make sure we comply with your code to have a dress.
Stick some numbers on each facade, depending on how it's gonna be numbered?
We'll update the plans to show that.
We want people to be, for emergency services and things, to know what building number you're at and things like that.
And I guess just on the affordable stuff, so this is a rental building, not for sale units, family units, not restricted by age?
It's definitely family units, yes, it's rental, yep.
Okay. Okay, there we go. All right, so as far as the architectural comments, I think that's, that's the meat of it.
And, and we understand there's a few comments there that are for the. And, and we understand there's a few comments there that are for the civil engineer. We're not going to ignore those, even though we're not going to be talking about them with this witness. We will address those in the resubmission, and we appreciate you helping us work through the architectural issues at this point.
Sure.
But we're not going to.
I have one more architectural from your, from your report. Building mounted lighting, I don't, I know, we're not talking about lumens or anything right now, but are there going to be building mounted fixtures?
I think we're required to have some illumination at the entries and over doors. We'll make sure that the lighting plan from the civil engineer includes all that.
Fixtures.
We need the fixtures and the plan.
We'll have all the information.
Right, because you have some residents that are not that far away, we want to make sure. Especially on the underneath parking. What's going to happen there because you're close to some residents.
Yes, there's, there's a number of comments in the report about provide lighting plans, lighting levels, how you're going to light the garage, how it's going to be controlled.
The site engineer is the one who's in charge of the lighting plan?
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, so.
That's in there, oh yeah.
They've been warned, they need to coordinate both the building and the site.
We were warned, yes.
Okay, there's also some regarding the open garage. Open parking.
Open parking area? The civil engineer, yes, that's all. He's not going near the outdoor parking area. Yes, we will talk about that also, for sure.
I, I know next time we're going to talk about the trash room storage, but just looking at Donna's report, nine point three. The planning takes three hundred and twenty-five square feet of storage in the garage area, and then taking all the other floors. There's a total of one thousand and five feet. I didn't know we're going to use the other floors to store garbage, and I thought it was going to go down the chute, not sit there and go down the chute. A week later, and then it says thirty fifty-seven eleven point A requires at least twelve square feet of storage area provided per dwelling. Of one hundred and twenty-six dwellings times twelve, we would need one thousand five hundred and twelve square feet, not a thousand.
What number, oh, nine point three you were saying?
Nine point three.
And you have one thousand five square feet in there, and you're saying that's.
That's, that's what I calculated between all the rooms.
Oh, oh, yeah. That's just what's there.
But should the third or fourth floor storage room, it goes down the chute? Be part of the storage area to God's side? I don't know, but no matter what, one hundred and twenty-six times twelve is a lot more than a thousand square feet.
Understood, we're going to, we'll redo, we'll put the calculations on there, redo the calculations, and provide testimony regarding how we think it would work.
Thank you.
So everybody can look at that.
Everything okay with you, Donna, with everything we spoke about that was answered? And then you'll then, you'll come back with some modifications and see what complies and what doesn't?
Absolutely.
What about you, Sam? Are we, is there anything architecturally that you're impacted by or no?
My letter was on the signage.
Your signage and that was it? Okay. Anything else from?
I've got a question.
Sure.
I understand you've got a five story building, but if you look at the neighborhood, this building is such a massive building in that area. What can you do to soften the impact of that building? The closest buildings you have in that area that anywhere approaches is the high school, which is a couple of blocks north. And you have the firehouse, which is half mile south. Is there anything you can do to soften the image of that massive building? I don't expect you to answer that question, Matt.
Yes, I, I can speak to what we, we have done to soften it, to the point that we have. And that has a lot to do with the large setbacks on Fourth and Fifth. And then also the large setback on the fifth floor. So that, as you, you look at this view right here, this looks like a four story building and not necessarily five, except where the lobby pops up there. So I think that we, we have done what we can to, to minimize the height impact of, of that fifth floor. And right, and to keep the scale of the, of the building down in a way where we're, we're recessing those balconies and we're changing materials and trying to kind of create a rhythm on that facade so it doesn't seem like one sheer wall. To give it a feel of something that, you know, is appropriate for, for Memorial Drive.
And as you said, we'll be back, you know, we're going to be back with more testimony on this, so that we'll provide.
I'd like to see if there's something else that you could do to kind of hide the fact that this is such a massive building in comparison to. If you look on either side of it, the biggest building is two stories. You know, just, just put some thought into it to see if you have any ideas. Possibly, I, I don't want to throw this out completely, but maybe if you had a couple of larger trees and maybe Lombardi poplars that are very tall and.
Right.
You know, don't take up a lot of, don't have a lot of drips aligned.
We could definitely talk to your landscape specialists about that. I know sometimes my professionals say this is the perfect tree, and then the municipal professionals say, no, no, it's going to die here. So, yes, we would make sure that whatever species, we could look for something that would be more appropriate to do that, to do that type of.
I just throw that out as one idea, and I, I'd like to see.
What was the species you mentioned?
It's a poplar, and it grows in a very tall, thin, I think it's Lombardi poplar, if I remember correctly. And it may not be appropriate for this location.
Well, we could look into it, the soil types and what we have there, and what it will do to sidewalks, or if it works well with sidewalks. We could certainly give you testimony on that when we return.
But certainly, it's not a full tree, you know, it's width, but it is quite tall. And maybe that's not the answer.
I just want to follow up on what Jim said, so I know this building, you know, a good portion of it is five stories tall. Can you tell us what, if anything, is taller, goes above the roof line of the fifth story? Besides the mechanical H V A Cs, is there an elevator bulkhead or stairwell bulkheads that pop up higher?
So, the elevator and the stair bulkheads are kind of contained within that popped up roof that happens at the, the lobby area. So here we're looking at Fifth Avenue and then Fourth. So the elevator, I think.
You can see it on the other side, you can see the pop tiny bit right there.
Right. So, yeah, this is a good view where that lobby space, that mass is right adjacent to the typical fifth floor. So there is a little step up happening there, I think we go from like fifty-nine to sixty-three feet, so it's four feet.
And that was blended into an architectural element to try to break up the roof line and break up the massing. So it was kind of a dual purpose, we have to pop up here, but let's use that to our advantage.
Well, we see, so what we see in the rendering of Fifth Avenue is as tall as it goes. I just know there's some buildings in the waterfront, we end up with these enormous bulkheads that.
The cooling towers up there, yeah.
Yeah, we don't intend to put any mechanical equipment or anything on top of these already taller pieces. That would all be on the areas that are set back.
Is there potential for any backup generators to be on site?
I don't anticipate it, I don't think it would be required. Right, that's true, it would depend on. Hydraulic calculations.
So none are planned at this time. If the fire system required something like that, we would have to incorporate it within the footprint here and explain that. Talk about noise, talk about exercising, talk about what type of fuel source, but right now we don't anticipate one.
Any other questions from the planning board members? Of this witness?
I, I do know, I will mention, I do know that there was discussions, a lot of discussions. I think the redevelopment plan doesn't allow a driveway on memorial. So now the discussion becomes, is fourth better, is fifth better, is both better? Our traffic expert, who's not here tonight, has looked at it, looked at the safety aspects of all of it. And we felt that this layout was the best. However, we're very interested to know if the planning board has any comments on that, thoughts on that? Because obviously, we want to be guided by your input. And if the board's not ready to discuss that in any more detail now, that's fine also. We'll have our civil engineer, we'll have our traffic here next time, so, you know, I didn't know if there was any thoughts.
I think a lot of thoughts, but I'd like to read your report. And then give you my thoughts.
Okay. Understood.
Any other questions from the planning board members?
It's not really a question, it's a, well, I don't know what. But when, and when you come back, you talk about the courtyard, because you, the landscape, the engineer will do that or you?
Or the landscape.
What's, what question about the courtyard?
Well, it's not a question, it's more, I know it's been commented there'll be more information provided next time about the courtyard. So I don't know what, what we're asking for.
Well, I, I know that, I was interested to see what, what it would even look like. Like what, what would the sides of them look like? Because we were looking at to see what the west side of the building looked like. And did it look the same inside?
We'll provide the elevation for those courtyard.
Just sort of rendering to see what that's going to be?
Oh, so, and then, but the treatment that's here is what's planned to be, which is paving and movable.
Paving and movable, you know, outdoor furniture, you know, kind of like what you see in that, you know, tables and chairs. Free standing planters.
Like outdoor kitchen or.
Or any like shade structures? The reason I'm asking, what I'm trying to get to is just, if, I, because I'm really glad there is outdoor usable space, but I think that space might be really challenging, I mean, in terms of use, just because heat and shade, like all the things that go on in like with, you have four stories surrounding, right, when you're in there. So just like how that space would be, I just don't know what, like what thinking had gone in in terms of like, yeah, just shade or anything like that for that space.
Right, I think, I think we'll provide a rendering of that interior space as well.
Should.
In addition to the elevation.
Landscaping would look like there. That would be helpful.
Well, I don't think there's, I don't think there's a plan for that, I don't think there's intended to be landscaping.
If there is, we should, we should see it.
Right.
Or if there isn't? Hey, zip line on the porch going down today.
Nobody's asked about those real big chess pieces. I'm waiting for somebody to ask if we're going to have a real big chess piece.
Anything else, any other questions from the planning board members? Any questions from the professionals of this witness until next time? Okay, any questions from the public of this witness of what was discussed today? All right, come on up.
Okay, my name's Frank Kuchnada, two oh nine Sixth Avenue. And I apologize, I haven't been to any of the previous meetings from this, regarding this project, but I was concerned about the parking. From what I understand, parking requirements are generally one point five per dwelling unit. So, just how is it that we get with less? And I apologize that I didn't attend other meetings, but I just wanted to understand that.
This redevelopment plan, all right, if you'd like to. We just had the number, we didn't say what the requirement was. And we are going to have the, who's going to discuss parking?
I think the, either the traffic engineer or the civil engineer could answer that question better than I could as far as the required number and usage.
They'll be, they'll be coming back with that in the next get together.
Okay.
Okay? As to what's required, what's not required and all that, yes. Next.
Hi, good evening, Eric Galipo, nine oh eight Fifth Avenue, well known to most of you, I believe. I do have some questions and sort of clarifications that I would like to ask about. First, you mentioned there will be no rooftop mechanicals. Is that correct?
There's, there are going to be rooftop mechanicals.
There are going to be rooftop mechanicals.
Above the fifth floor, correct.
Is it possible for you to indicate the area of those on your plans in future?
Eric, we've spoken to my.
Just speaking.
Is it possible for you to indicate the locations of those rooftop mechanicals in your future plans?
They're right here.
They're shown on the roof plan.
Zoom in a little. So there is a square box.
So the shaded area indicates kind of what we've designated as a mechanical equipment zone?
Which shaded area?
Around the.
Perimeter.
Dark gray.
The loop here, the dark gray, and you see the little boxes kind of diagrammatically showing the mechanical units?
If in your future testimony, can you provide the vertical height approximately of each of those?
Yes, so we, we said that we would do a line of sight diagram showing a view from, from the sidewalk on the opposite side of the right away.
Indicating those on your elevations may also be helpful.
Correct, we'll, we'll have more information on the unit locations and screening if, if we find that it's required based on the line of sight diagram.
Will you be applying a noise standard to understand the sound that those units would project and the distance from which they can be heard from that, at the building, from adjacent properties?
I don't know that I could testify to the, the noise of the mechanical units.
Are they residential units?
They're, they're residential condensing units.
So similar to what you have in your backyard?
They're, they're set back fairly good distance from any property lines. We've placed them on the uppermost roof and set them as far back as is feasible. We need a ten foot dimension from the edge of the building, but.
If I'm reading this sort of correctly, those units sit at least twenty feet from the edge of the rear property line facing this, I guess it would be the west, is that correct? I'm just kind of ballparking it.
I could, I could dimension this plan and give more detail, I think it's more than twenty feet.
And simply just indicating them on the elevations.
Yeah, it looks like almost thirty.
Part of the units?
Twenty-five to the building and then. Yeah. So, we're at least twenty-five feet from the property line to the face of the building. So you're looking at least fifty feet until.
Yeah, okay. Would you investigate the quietest possible units, please? So, I do want to ask about. I want to sort of go in an organized fashion, I have a few, quite a few questions here. If we could talk about your lighting plans, will you be coordinating your architectural elevations to show the specific locations of the fixtures that are proposed as well as the lighting levels from the building line to the property line?
Yes, we'll have updated lighting information that the civil engineer will testify.
And you'll indicate.
That would be our expectation.
You will indicate the fixture locations on all four facades?
Right, we'll have a coordinated lighting plan.
Thank you. Can you go to your ground floor plan? Can you describe to me the extent of the enclosure of the bike area?
So, excuse me, the, the bike area is.
Can you zoom in further, I'm sorry to, yeah.
Right, these, these are solid walls, right, it's essentially creating a room. This is an open doorway, there's no door here, it's just kind of open into the bike room, and then we have a wall area to hang these wall mounted bike racks.
Okay, so it is primarily enclosed with an opening about four feet on the north and south and east side of the, okay, got, got. Currently, how are you proposing access to that space from the general building?
Yeah, so right now the testimony was those people would access out into the underground garage. There's been a request for us to consider maybe making it easier and maybe maybe the second.
making the second exit. So that's something we're going to look at because the planning board is requesting that. We haven't decided that yet or looked at the feasibility, but that was a request from the board.
Um, yeah. Would you consider investigating the shortest possible distance from the bike room to the sidewalk so as not to create a long circuitous route through the, through the buffered area into, to the sidewalk?
I mean, we'd have to, yeah, we take it, there's all constraints, there's other constraints that all come into play, but that would certainly be...
Yes, we would appreciate, would you investigate the shortest possible route?
Yes.
Trash room, if you don't mind. So, I'm correct that the only current entrance to the trash room is from the exterior of the building?
Yes.
Have you considered allowing your commercial tenants to have interior access through the garage to the trash room to avoid schlepping, for lack of a better term?
That's something that we're going to look at, yes.
Yeah, I would also suggest or ask that you consider your residential tenants to have similar interior access, reserving exterior access for service and getting the trash to the street?
Correct, we're going to look at that.
Uh, this may be landscape, but the sidewalk ends at, the trash access ends at the sidewalk, but your trash needs to get all the way to the curb. Have you considered an apron that would lead to a place where your trash could be conveniently left for pickup at the curb?
Yeah, I, the site engineer can...
So I'm sure, yes. You'll also need to coordinate that with the city since it's on public property. Not sure that there was a response about the discrepancy between the primary building entrance on Memorial Drive, but the plans being consistent with the concept plans. What is the official line here?
Well, it's certainly something that we're going to continue to testify on the next year.
Do I have to cook any entrance from here?
Are you on the road?
Yes.
Application.
Yeah. My understanding that the entrance is where it was proposed and to be developed and if something says something different in writing, there's a mistake, potentially a typo. My understanding is the entrance is where it was planned to be, approved to be, and we have no intentions of changing anything or further investigating anything unless there's a mistake or something that I don't know where.
Understood. Just wanted to make sure that we were clear that there is a discrepancy and somewhere a determination needs to be made. Can we go to the area where you said the gas meters were proposed? I would like to ask that, whatever the decision of the, well, first of all, you need to determine if the building is electric only or gas. If you are in fact storing, you're locating gas meters in this location, would you consider exterior screening? I'm only reinforcing what board member Goonan or vice chair Goonan mentioned.
Right, we got that covered.
Yes, we're going to address that.
Yep, we got that.
All right, okay. So then, can you go to your west elevation? Yeah. Can you zoom in on the open area above the garage? As you provide lighting locations in your elevations, will you specify the downlighting from the garage and consider that you may need to provide some vertical shielding at the building face rather than just inside the garage? There is no, am I correct that there is no, like if I, you have to go back to your ground floor plan, sorry to make you jump around here. There is just a small portion of the cars parking along the rear where they're, they poke out past the building line. Is that's correct?
Right.
And so providing some one foot of vertical screening above nine feet or whatever it is?
Yeah, we will provide more detail on that. There is a drop beam that happens at the rear, but...
Okay, yeah, just, I just want to be clear that the screening and the light levels from the garage should be considered in your overall lighting plan.
Yeah.
And be additive to what's being provided on the exterior.
Right.
So, okay. So, related to, there are some elements here on your architectural concept plans that are not coordinated to the civil plans around the presence of bump outs at Fourth and Fifth along Memorial. So you're indicating pedestrian bump outs here. I just want the plans to be coordinated so we can be sure...
Oh, the curb bump outs, yeah, we'll be sure that that's aligned with the civil road choice.
Right. So, well, nobody's testified to civil, so we can't really ask any questions there. The louver system? Can you go to, you know, just a typical detail of your louver system? Have you considered that the louvers could be an element of your public art, either through a creative painting pattern or, you know, custom cut panels rather than simple straight louvers?
Yeah, we, we said that we're going to look at this elevation. We're going to provide more information for this elevation and we're looking at ways to incorporate public art on this as well.
And you'll still need to maintain the natural ventilation?
Right.
So then finally, the, on the Fourth Avenue elevation here, is the, is the open area in the rear of the building or on the west side where that looks into the garage? I understand there will be landscape screening?
There'll be a fence that comes in front of that area as well.
Okay, landscaping. Well, if that, okay, it, right, we haven't had site testimony.
Testify about landscape, if there's a, if there is.
Right, right, understood. Okay, I would also urge you to consider, or would you consider, I have to phrase it like a question, would you consider an architectural treatment of that piece of the facade that is more harmonious with the rest of the facade as well as potential for some sort of, you know, more creative expression of the stair tower on this side?
Yeah, we're going to relook at the whole, the whole Fourth Avenue facade, what's to...
Okay, thank you.
Hi, David Bedola, 908 Fifth Avenue. Eric and I are the little house that you've been seeing next to the building. Just to clarify, that's our home. So when cars, if I could see the parking area again, the first floor. So when cars pull into the west and every time they pull into there, the lights are going to be shining directly onto our property. And also, when they pull around the back and drive to the back of the parking spaces, they will be pointing at us. So we're hoping that with proper landscaping and hopefully the fence, that that will sort of minimize that. So we look forward to seeing the landscaping that's happening there and...
Solid fence there too, with the lights.
A six-foot.
Yeah, it'll be a solid fence.
Yeah, but when those cars are pulling in and out, you're still going to have lights. It doesn't block every bit. We're hoping the landscaping will work with that too. There's a 10-foot buffer of, between the, and the parking space and the property line. Why doesn't that 10-foot buffer continue around the corner and across the west side of the property also?
That's really a civil engineer's collection. Like, this witness, it didn't design that, so my next witness designed that and would answer that question better.
Gotcha.
He'll be at the next year.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we, so this witness is...
Well, he'll be back.
He'll be back. We know he'll be back.
We'll fly him back again. He flew in tonight. He'll fly in again.
I'm here at National Park.
Yeah, other Dan's flying. He's much more Miami over there.
All right.
So, we, we, we would like to get our revised plans in. We think maybe we would get those submitted by the, our goal is to have them submitted by the 28th.
28th of...
Of April.
Okay.
And I don't know if it was possible, we would like to be adjourned to the next, a next meeting and have notice carried. I don't know if May 19th, is that a hearing day? I don't know if that would be possible.
Remember that, that with all, anything that's resubmitted, they have to go through and get reports. Reports have to be updated. So we have, we have a whole process. So let's say that if you do get them in by the 28th of April, the, your closest shot is this, is June 16th.
Okay, not the...
That's the first meeting. Sorry? Go ahead.
Is it?
It is. According to what I see.
This is the one that's open.
This is the first one that's open.
Are you looking at, oh, May 19?
Do we have something scheduled for May 19?
But wait, hold on.
So in theory, we have the views coming back.
No, we already have plans, okay? So if we, if, unless my schedule's incorrect, if I'm looking at, the submission has to come in on the 28th, right? That's right here.
But because it's the revision, she...
It's a revision, you don't need as much time.
That's correct. So then, in theory, Donna?
Yeah, if they submit by April 28th.
Yes.
Then we would give you our report the week before, which is the 12th or the 19th.
All right, so, so here's a question, okay?
Unless there's...
No, to the applicant.
I don't know what's going on with the schedule.
No, no, the schedule would work, but if the applicant, okay, we, all right, we have a question for you. So, so that if you can get us the information by the 28th, Donna can get you a report by, you said what, the 12th? May 12th, okay? May 12th. So if we get you in here on the 19th, is that enough time for you to react? Is seven days enough time?
Well, I also want to make sure that they can make the 28th.
That's what I'm saying. Because our next availability after the 19th is June 16th. That's our next availability.
We'll have to do the...
So...
Okay, so June 16th.
June 16th, then we'll put you in for June 16th. And that will give you, that will give the reports enough time, but you're still looking to get it to us by the 28th.
Well, if we're going to, if we're going to not have the hearing until June 16th, we would probably use more time to refine our resubmission.
Okay, so then, Marie, do we go, do we go with May 12th for the submission?
May 19.
I just hope.
Okay, so, so by May 19th, we need your reports, we need the revisions by May 19th for us to hit the June 16th presentation date.
June 16th hearing, yes.
All right. Can I get a motion to, to move this application without notice to June 16th?
Do you consent to any extension of time within which we need to act under the MLU until that hearing date of June?
June 16th, yeah, can we consent to that extension of time?
Okay. Can I get a motion to...
Second.
Okay. James Bonanno?
Yes.
Councilwoman Clayton?
Yes.
Jim Henry?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Jen Souter?
Yes.
Kathy McLaуllan?
Yes.
Vice Chair Goonan?
Yes.
Chairwoman Kerzak?
Yes.
Okay. Motion, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all in favor, none opposed.
Hi, hi.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.